Hello and welcome to Superintendent Matt Digner and School Board Candidates to this forum. I'm Jean Bancroft, member of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County, and I will be the moderator for this forum. The League of Women Voters is a volunteer, nonpartisan organization that neither supports nor opposes any party or candidate. The League does take positions after considerable study on issues and acts to influence decision-makers on those issues. We work to not only register voters, but also to provide them with information on issues to assist their participation in government. Membership is open to anyone 16 years of age and older. Please join us. We can use your time and your talent. League members advocate and inform voters. Democracy works best when more people are involved. Today, tonight, we will start our forum with a brief informational presentation from Iowa City Community School District Superintendent Matt Digner. There are two public measures on the ballot that affect the school district in our community. He's here tonight to give a brief overview of each of those measures. Superintendent Digner?
Thank you, Jean. Good evening, everybody. Like Jean said, I just wanted to give you guys a brief overview of the public measures. It'll be on the November 2 ballot. I'm going to share my screen here really briefly so that you can see the district landing page, where you can find more information about these two different public measures. And the two different public measures are the PEPAL and SAVE. The PEPAL, if you click on this right information here for you, if you wanted to learn more about these, the one I'm just going to show you guys here this evening is the two explanations between the PEPAL and SAVE. Equipment levy, and that is for projects that improve our grounds, our major equipment, including technology, construction, remodeling purposes. And that's a $1.34 tax on a $1,000 valuation. And so the board approves a .33 levy, and this is a voter-approved $1.34 levy. This would expire in 2025, so it's already funds that the district has coming in, seeing that to be extended from 2025 to 2035. The SAVE, the Secu-ation, is really funded by the state sales tax dollars. So we are all already paying into that tax. That's the state sales tax. And then what the district is asking voters to consider is approving a revenue purpose statement. And that revenue purpose statement then allows the district to spend those dollars on the different things you see that are listed here in front of you. So again, a lot of the similar components around improvement of grounds, major equipment, maybe end programs, and maybe be a difference you see here between the SAVE and the PEPAL. I think a couple important things just to note are this is a no-new-money ask from the district, so these are already existing taxes. So there's no new tax that's being asked for. It's a 50% threshold. So it just takes a simple majority to approve both of these public measures. I do want to remind you, you would need to flip the ballot over to see the revenue purpose statement portion. The language is long, and you can actually see the ballot language here on our district website as well. There's a link here on this same right-hand side that shows you the actual ballot language. These two levies would be important for the district because, as you can see, a lot of the tabs talk about Facility Master Plan 2.0. The district's facility master plan. After eight and a half years, we said it would take 10 years, and we've completed it under the amount of time and under budget. So I think we have good credibility on the ability to design and execute a plan as it's been told to the public. And so by extending these two measures, that gives us funding flexibility to take on a second facility master plan and continue the momentum from FMP 1.0 so that we don't see a delay and get behind its needs. You hear us talk a little bit about lifecycle projects, and that's the importance of operations and of buildings is really that we keep them on a lifecycle format so that those needs don't build, and then the district would be in a position to catch up on too many needs at once. I would encourage you to think about looking and spending some more time on the FMP 2.0 overview, and then the actual projects as we've started to chart out what a second facility master plan would look like. There's a group one that talks about completing the promise of FMP 1.0, things that we had determined were needs as we went through that first facility master plan, but weren't able to address because they either weren't categorized into the first bond they've since presented as a need, or as we just consider additional student growth and new desires in the district. Those are projects that are listed there. Group two talks about more of those typical lifecycle expenditures. In an organization, you know, you don't want to try to replace all of your technology at once, your bus fleet, your playgrounds. You can't do all of those things at one time, and so we have to keep them on that lifecycle replacement component. And then the third group, and the last thing I'll share with you this evening, is really about long-term considerations. And how do we make sure that we're having conversations that keep our district future-forward, creating a new vision for our students of what learning and some of those opportunities? See that that impacts things like early childhood education, climate action initiatives as we consider our environment, and then the whole child approach with looking at fine arts, athletic venues, our health clinics, magnet potential immersion programs, and some of those different larger conversations the district needs to continue to have. So I just did a community forum at 5:00, you know, and we talked for about 45 minutes of this. So sum it up for you here in five minutes. I know is super brief and doesn't quite do it justice, but we at least wanted to give you some familiarity on what were the two measures that were being asked for. Again, they're the PEPAL and Revenue Purpose Statement that allows us to spend those SAVE dollars in that capacity. So happy to share that with you tonight. Happy to answer questions via email or phone calls. My email is easy to find. This landing page for the district is also easy to find, but definitely wanted to give you a little bit of information and insight into what we're up to and what you'll see on the ballot there in November. So I think that's it, Jean, unless there's anything else you want me to expand upon.
That's wonderful. Thank you very much. If any questions appear in the chat that are for you, we'll get those to you at a later time, okay? All right, thank you. Now we're going to proceed with the candidate forum portion of our evening. And you need to remember that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates. All candidates have been invited to participate, and I have to sadly announce that Sheila Pinter, who is one of the candidates, contacted us yesterday that her mother died on Tuesday morning, and so she had to leave to go to Chicago. So we're all very sad about that, but she had every intention of participating otherwise. The format for this evening is as follows. After candidates have been introduced, they will each have two minutes for opening remarks. We will then present questions to them. Our first questions come from league members, and then I will work in questions from the chat as they turn up. Each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. There will not be time for rebuttals. We are scheduled for an hour, so like an hour from now. Near the end of our scheduled time for this event, each candidate will have two minutes again for closing remarks. And then we're going to rotate the speaking order so that different persons starts with each question. A league member, Mary Stein, is our timekeeper, using cards to alert the candidates when time is about up. She has like a one minute and a 30-second and a stop. And when it is up. The election is scheduled for November 2, and early voting started on October 13. Early voting for the November 2, 2021, city and school election did begin on October 13 and is available weekdays and 10 to 4 on Saturday, October 30 and 31, at the auditor's office. You can check the auditor's website for other satellite locations and times. We do have five candidates running for three seats on the Iowa City Community School District Board. Our candidates are Maka Pilcher Hayek, Krista Burns, JP Claussen, Jane Finch, and Ruthina Malone. And as I said, we're going to go ahead and have the opening statements. There is the one candidate running to fill a two-year term, to fill a vacancy. So we're going to start with Ms. Pilcher Hayek to give her opening statement, and then we'll go to the other candidates.
Thank you for the introduction, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for hosting this. It was hard for us to get that orchestrated with the DPO because we have some staffing issues, so thank you so much. My husband and I have three children in the school district. One is in elementary, one is in junior high, and one is in high school. I've been involved in the public school system and in the Iowa City Community School District since our oldest daughter started. So it's been about 10 years. I've volunteered on every, you know, PTO and PTA that my kids were in the school for, and I'm the president of the District-wide Parent Organization. And so I try to volunteer in all of those type of things. But also, when the district was addressing attendance areas and equity issues, I co-formed the Every Student Any School Committee. We called it ESAS, and it successfully gathered people from across the district to discuss equity concerns. I also co-formed the and managed the One Community, One Bond campaign, which garnered so much support that we passed the largest bond in Iowa's history at the time. Working with people from all over this district and seeing the Facilities Master Plan 1.0 become a reality is by far one of the most rewarding experiences of my life. I have a background in education. I was a teacher before I was a lawyer. And when I'm not parenting or lawyering, I spend my time advocating for public education. I do this because you can draw a straight line between a well-educated population and a successful community. The Iowa City Community School District educates 14,000 students every year, and every student deserves the same access to the same excellent education and the same excellent facilities. For some students, access is as easy as having your parent drop you off in the morning. For others, it means making sure you have safe transportation, language learning supports, and IEP or other learning supports. Regardless of our differences, every child's success has an impact on our community's future. So if, as a member of the school board, I will use my education and my experience to continue making public education the best education. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'll hear opening statements from the candidates for the three school board seats. We'll start with Ms. Burris.
Yes, thank you, and thank you for organizing and having this. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to all of you. So I'm Krista Burris. I moved to Iowa City in 2013, so almost eight years. And I have two boys in the district. They're both in elementary school. One is, he just started LEMI. We moved over the summer. And since my other son is in sixth grade, he wanted to stay at Lincoln, and so he's actually at Lincoln. And we've had very positive experiences, but the school district has been very welcoming and inclusive and nothing but positive things to say. A little more about me, my background. For the last 15 years, I've been an educational researcher, and it's been my whole career. So I worked at the College Board after I got out of grad school. And then when we moved here in 2013, I've been at ACT. And so really, my job has been to look at data and to look at the relationship between how opportunity and access relates to how students perform in school and how they go on to have rewarding lives. And so like Maka, I know how important K-12 education is for opening doors for all our students, and I want to advocate for that so that all students have that rewarding life. I know also, just from a community standpoint, a strong K-12 education promotes economic growth locally, so it's important for all of us as we prepare our future leaders. Thank you.
Thank you. And now Mr. Claussen.
Thank you, Jean, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for organizing this. Appreciate the opportunity. My name is JP Claussen. I'm currently on the Board of Directors and have been for the last four years. I do have two adult children who both went through Iowa City Community School District, a son who graduated from City High School in 2012, and then my daughter graduated from Tate Alternative High School in 2017. Currently, my daughter Stephanie attends Kirkwood Elementary in Corahville, where she's in the fifth grade. I've lived in the area since 1992. I came here to go to the University of Iowa and stuck around like a lot of people do. I taught for 10 years in the school district. I was a special education teacher at West High from 2004 to 2014, working mostly with students who have emotional and behavioral disorders. Currently, I work, again, as a teacher on the inpatient child and adolescent psychiatric unit at the University of Iowa Hospitals and Clinics. I've been doing that since I left the district. You know, I'm running for reelection because one of the things I'm really proud of, certainly the work that the board has done, but also the way that we've been able to do that work. The four candidates who were elected in 2017 talked about and made a promise to work together very functionally. And I believe we brought that functioning to the board. I believe the way that we operate, even when we disagree, really allows our staff the confidence to move forward with our policies in a really robust way, and it lets us get more work done. And so, you know, I'm running, again, for that reelection to continue that work, both the work we're doing on equity, the work we're doing facilities, the work we're doing on curriculum, and as well to continue doing the work, you know, the way we've been doing it with collegiality and not being disagreeable even when we might disagree. So I'd appreciate your support for another term.
Thank you. Now Ms. Finch.
Thank you, Jean, and thank you to the women tonight. Good evening, undecided voters. My name is Jane Finch. I live in Corahville. I have two sons at West High School. My husband, Rami, is a naturalized citizen from Palestine and was at the University of Iowa. We both lived in the area for about 30. I'm running for school board because I think I can make a difference. And the reason I think I can make a difference is because I already have. Four years ago, I joined the Equity Advisory with the express goal of trying to shift the way our school district discipline from punitive to a more growth-minded and restorative approach. I became a justice facilitator. I met several other district stakeholders along the way who had the same goals as I did, and we successfully advocated to change the way our school district approached discipline when they unveiled their rethinking School Discipline Document this summer. Two years ago, I became the chair of the committee. And as the chair, I did to focus on in the way that our community functioned together so that we could betterize our potential. I worked on the relationships with a committee member amongst ourselves as well as our relationships with the administrators so that could work with us and so that we could realize our goals. After seeing the climate survey data, the student climate survey data that indicated that students felt that they didn't have a... I invited students to join and take up leadership roles. One of them became my co-chair. It was that last year with the students on the committee that changed the dynamics completely and allowed us to accomplish more in one year than we had accomplished in the three years prior. And it was really working with those spots to lean into this work more, to run for the board, to continue towards the betterment of our school district that is welcoming for all and to advocate for all of our students.
Thank you. And Ms. Malone.
Hi, everyone. First, I would like to thank the League of Women Voters for hosting tonight's forum and those of you for tuning in. I also want to say good luck to the other candidates as I know that they are as excited and probably a little bit nervous as I am. My name is Ruthina Malone, current member of the Iowa City Community School District School Board, wife to an ICCSD schoolteacher and mother of a former district student. And I'm asking the community to reelect me for a second term because I want to continue fulfilling the work that I started when you first elected me in 2017. Over the last four years, I've worked with the other board members to build a good working relationship with our students, families, staff, and ICCSD community. Our board has worked to address some of the inequalities that some of our marginalized students have faced for decades by providing structure and support so that administration teams and staff can address issues related to disproportionality. We have continued to create a supportive atmosphere for administration to see the importance of having diversity, equity, and inclusion as a guiding principle in all that we do. And of course, we have tackled the challenges raised by COVID-19 pandemic head-on. But there's so much more to be done, and I would love the honor to continue serving you as an ICCSD board member. If I'm reelected, I vow to continue to represent our community in a way that instills trust in not only myself, but the board as a governing body. Again, thank you.
Thank you very much. We will now proceed to our questions. We'll rotate the speaking order for the candidates. Members of the audience are invited to put questions in the chat, and I will ask as many of those as I can as the program continues this evening. We'll start with questions from the league. And remember, you have one minute to respond to each question. First question. What is motivating you to run for the Iowa City Community School District School Board? And what is something that you notice about the learning environment in the district if you've had the opportunity to visit the schools? And this would start with Ms. Burris.
Sure. So what's motivating me to run? I really, as I mentioned in the beginning, want to help with student outcomes to make sure all of our students are successful. I think I bring a unique skill set in my training and experience. As I mentioned, the last 15 years, every day I go into work, I look at the data. I examine the data, and I know how important K-12 education is for students to go on to go on to college, to get a job. And so I really want to support those efforts and use my training in data analysis and evidence and science to support those decisions. In terms of the learning environment, I would say all my interactions when I go into the school, it's beyond just the academic learning and the education. The teachers that my boys have had the opportunity to learn from, and their thought and care has been so inspiring. And I just want to work and provide service to our community so that they can do their jobs. I know that teachers change children's lives, and I want to help support them do that.
Thank you so much. Mr. Claussen?
Yeah, well, thank you for the question. You know, what's motivating me to run, like I said in my introduction, is really to continue the work and to continue it in a very collegial way. You know, we've started a lot of initiatives, whether that's our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Plan that's evolving and changing and becoming better and more specific as we move on through the years. I'd like to see that move further along. We have a very inclusive and supportive LGBTQ+ policy that I would like to continue to support. Certainly, I would like to see us, you know, move in the direction of fulfilling the vision of our portrait of our graduate work that we did to kind of define what we really want a learner to look like and help that further along. And again, yeah, to support our wonderful students and staff. And to be honest, I feel that COVID kind of took some took some of that work away from us, right? When we had to focus on that pandemic, we had no choice. And so I think it would feel good to me to be able to have four more years to be able to focus on that work and hopefully come out of this pandemic.
Thank you. Next is Ms. Finch.
Thanks, Jean. So I'm having some technical difficulties. I think it was because of the wind earlier. So my internet might be spotty. Could you repeat the question real quick?
Sure. What is motivating you to run for the Iowa City Community School District School Board? And what is something you've noticed about the learning environment in the district if you've had the opportunity to visit schools?
So I think I touched on why what is motivating me, you know, is really that the students and the work that I did with them. I want to continue advocating for improved climate and culture, social-emotional learning, mental health supports. I want to make sure that the changes that we've done with the discipline policy are carried out with fidelity. I really focused on improving the relationships that students have with each other, students have with teachers, teachers have with each other, that teachers have with the administrators. As far as what I've noticed, last night evening, I was actually at the Ed Committee meeting, and one of the teachers was talking about the math curriculum. And I was incredibly touched at her experiences with working with students in the blended Algebra I and ELL room and what she told us about that experience. And we were all very moved by that. So I think that a lot of the things that I want to see are already happening. Very pleased to see that.
Thank you. Ms. Malone, same question?
Sure, thank you. You know, JP touched on a lot of the reasons that also motivates me for seeking reelection, so I'll try not to repeat a lot of those. But I would agree that it feels as though COVID-19 took a lot of our attention over the last 20 months. And so I'm motivated to run, to really work with the administration team to tackle some of the opportunity gaps that our marginalized students are still facing and that has only been exasperated by COVID-19. And what I've noticed about learning environments being in the schools recently is that our teachers and students are very stressed right now. This has been a difficult 20 months, and so we really need to figure out better ways to address mental health concerns for students and teachers.
Thank you. And next, Ms. Pilcher Hayek.
Yes, hi, thank you. So you'll hear me say a thousand times what motivates me to run on the board and to advocate for public education is that I think that there's nothing more important to society than the quality of our public education. So even if I'm not on the board, I'm going to advocate for public education for the rest of my life. What have I seen? Or let's see, what have I noticed about the learning environment? You know, a couple of things. We have in the junior high, for example, we have some issues with fighting, and, you know, there's clearly kids that need some additional social and emotional support. And so then you can get down in the dumps about, you know, gosh, how are we going to meet the needs of all these kids? And then the next day, I went to a book fair event at New Hoover, and there were hundreds of people, maybe 200 people there, families. I probably heard six different languages. I heard African languages, Asian languages, different Spanish dialects. It was beautiful, and everyone was there for a book fair. So I've had different experiences.
Thank you so much. The next question goes first to Mr. Claussen, and this one has to do with something you mentioned, actually. The board has had to make critical decisions navigating the COVID-19 crisis in the past two years. Sure, you're well aware of that. What are your views regarding current mitigation efforts being implemented by the district? And how can teachers and staff be supported in these challenging times?
Yeah, thanks for that question. So, you know, we have a multi-layered mitigation strategy, certainly, that involves PPE, sanitizing, and I think most importantly right now is our mask mandate. Because one thing we're not able to do is socially distance. You know, we just don't have the space, and we have so many kids that that's not really something we're able to employ. And so I'm very supportive of the mask mandate. And I'll tell you, our numbers look really good. We have the lowest incidence of COVID we've had since the first week of school or the first couple of weeks. And so since that mandate's been in effect, we've really seen those numbers come down. And I think, you know, to support students, we just need to continue to work to kind of keep the morale up, right? We're going to get through this. We're going to get through this together. You know, we need to provide certainly the logistical support folks need and the cleaning and the PPE and all of that stuff in addition to encouraging vaccines. You know, I think we're all waiting for that time when folks 12 and under can be vaccinated. And the district has worked really well with the hospital, UIHC, in the past at getting those vaccines to our staff and students. And I would like to see those efforts continue.
Thank you. Ms. Finch, same question? Did you hear it? Do you need me to repeat it?
Yeah, can you repeat it? I really am.
Sure, no, no problem, no problem. Okay. "The board has had to make critical decisions navigating the COVID-19 crisis in the past two years. What are your views regarding current mitigation efforts being implemented by the district? And how can teachers and staff be supported in these challenging times?"
Well, I would like to say that I really do think that the board... Well, I would like to say that I really do think that the board did a very good job of balancing health and safety and accessibility over the past year and I agree with the mask mandate. The approach and it shows that it is working because we, our rates are very low at this time. It's very important that, that our students and staff get vaccinated if they are able and willing. And so I, and I, I support everything that the board has done.
Thank you so much. And Ms. Malone?
Yes, thank you. My views regarding our mitigation efforts is that I believe it's the right thing to do, not only to protect our students and staff, but our community as a whole. Because we know that our people interact with college students, business owners. And if we don't take the steps of providing as much protection while in school, then we're just part of the problem. So I'm 100% supportive that we were able to institute a mask mandate. And I do believe that we need to be aware of the stress and the concerns that our students and staff still have regarding their vulnerability to either catch COVID or even some of the questions surrounding vaccination. There is, you know, could be some hesitancy from staff to take the vaccine. And I think they need to have an understanding place where they can have those questions answered without judgment. Because trust me, our teachers and our families are under enough pressure without that added judgment as to why they may be a little bit hesitant. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Pilcher Hayek, next.
I agree that our, our district, our administration and our board has handled this crisis situation with a level of sophistication that we couldn't expect anymore from. I've been so impressed. And, you know, we've never, we haven't nailed it every step of the way because none of us have ever done this before. So I respect that. I respect the efforts they've made. I would just like to add to what Ruthina said. I was thinking when I was getting ready today, how many times today alone I had to think about COVID. I had to think about whether a mask was available for so-and-so or whether I did X, Y, or Z easily 20 times today. So then you think of the kids who are also going through that so many times a day. And two years ago, this wasn't a thought. It wasn't on our minds at all. It's a stressful thought that all of us, including children, have tens of times a day. So we cannot underestimate the impact that's having on their social and emotional health, which means it's having an impact on their learning. So we're just going to have to make sure we're attentive to that.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Burris, same question?
Yes, thank you. I completely agree with the other candidates. I think the board did a really excellent job, especially when their hands were often tied with state legislation. So I was very pleased when we were allowed to get an injunction in place. Again, I come from a data background, a researcher background, and there was a study that just was published that showed COVID cases were three times higher in schools where there wasn't a mandate in place. And as others have mentioned, if you're stressed, if you have anxiety and you're worried about getting sick, you can't learn. And so we want to create a safe environment for students to learn. And this is so important, as JP mentioned, there isn't a vaccine for kids 12 and under. So that's our whole elementary population. Those kids are not 12 and so we need to keep them safe as well. And I know there's other mitigation way, tools, quarantine, but that's not ideal. We've already disrupted education for the last 20 months. Kids were learning at home. We had to stop instruction altogether and we've seen the data, we've seen the research, there's learning loss. And so we need to keep our kids in school, but we need to do that in a safe way. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we will begin with Ms. Finch. And this question comes from the chat, so it comes from a citizen. To avoid a repeat of the budget cuts that occurred in 2015, what action or actions would, should the board take to help raise the district's unspent balance to the board policy of a minimum of 5%? This is especially important in a time when the state has shown it is not going to properly fund public education at the needed levels. Ms. Finch?
So this is why I think it's important that the board understands every dollar is going in our district. And that we comb through the budget and make sure we are directing as much money into the classroom as possible. We, what we don't want to do is to, for, thing such that we're, we're taking money out of the classroom. And that, I think that's the bottom line for me is that we want to make sure that we are keeping the money in the classroom.
Thank you. And next for that question, Ms. Malone?
Thank you. And thank you to the community member who provided that question. I think one of the most important actions that we, that the board must take is not to change that threshold of 5%. Because if we tend to drop below that, that means we're starting to spend more and that could benefit in a short term our classrooms. But down the road, because the state isn't funding public education as they should, we will find ourselves back in a deep hole that we saw this district being in in 2015. So we do need to take a look at every dollar, how that's being spent. But we also need to make sure that we keep a healthy cushion because times will get hard. They're continuing to get hard for the district. So dipping further into that could create an issue that it will take us so much harder to get out of that hole by thinking that reducing that will help us. And again, that would probably help us in the short term, but the long-term gains will not be seen.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pilcher Hayek?
Yeah, sorry, I realized I didn't mute myself afterward. Boy, was I lucky to go after Ruthina because I totally agree. We can't go below 5%. It is a necessary cushion. I think it's, cushion is a good word and I think we have to be cautious. And I was at the meeting where the board discussed that and it was basically making sure we have enough money to cover expenditures if circumstances, financial circumstances become even more dire. We are always going to have to look for efficiency, you know, ways to be more efficient. Having said that, I think we have a relatively lean administration. We just have to be very thoughtful in who we hire and making sure that we hire for the positions needed. We will always be looking at that. Any large institution has to continually examine whether we're being efficient. Funding is going to be an issue indefinitely at this point and it's really unfortunate. It's depressing that public education isn't receiving the funding it deserves. In the meantime, our district's just going to have to continue to watch for waste and be as efficient as possible.
Thank you. Ms. Burris?
Yes, thank you. I totally agree with Maka and Ruthina. We need to make sure we don't go below that 5% and also comb through our budget and make sure that we're spending our dollars wisely. And when I mean wisely, I mean we're spending on money where we've shown this will improve student outcomes. This will help our students so that all of our students are leaving the district college and career ready. And so hopefully that will drive our decision-making. And I will just say, this is why it's so important that we don't divert public dollars outside of public education. So I know that's come up a lot with the voucher program and so we need to keep that funding within our public school district so that we can provide a high-quality K-12 education.
Thank you. And Mr. Claussen, same question?
Yeah, thanks for this question. Obviously, this is one of the most important aspects of the job of being a school board member is minding that budget and being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. And this is a very fine needle to thread. Because the easy way to save that money would just be to pay our teachers less and to have fewer teachers. I don't think that's something this district wants to do, right? We want to attract and retain high-quality staff and we want to make sure we have enough staff to provide the service. And the reason that can be helpful is the number one driver of our budget is our growth, is the number of students we have in the district. So we need to make sure we're maintaining a quality educational system so we can compete with private schools. You know, there's a charter bill now that anybody can pretty much come along and create their own charter school and we need to compete with that. So we need to make sure that the service we're offering is above and beyond our competitors, one. And two, I'll tell you, one of the things I love about being on the school board is our finance department. They do a great job of projecting our unspent balance. And no, it's not at 5%. It hasn't been for a while, but they really let us know when we're dipping into really dangerous territory. And so, you know, when we listen to their advice, I think that's the best thing we can do moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Malone, you will be the first person on the next question, which also comes from the community. Being on the school board is a huge job, which takes a lot of time. How much time do you have in your life to devote to this endeavor?
Thank you again, community member, for that question. You know, having already served on the board for four years, I have been able to ensure that I have enough time to give the board my most sometimes full attention during the week. I arrange my work schedule and if my boss is listening, he can co-sign on this. I take vacation days when needed to make sure that I'm prepared for meetings, that I'm getting in our buildings. And one of the reasons why I chose to run when I did four years ago is because that was at a time that I knew my family didn't need me as much and they probably were hoping that I had something else to take me, my attention, because my daughter was a senior. And it was a family decision because we do recognize that this is a huge commitment to our community. And in order to effectively serve, I knew that I would be putting in at least anywhere to do the job correctly, 10 to sometimes 20 hours, just because I want to be that involved and that knowledgeable of what's happening in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Pilcher Hayek?
So as I've mentioned, I think there's nothing more important than public education and I've been committing a bunch of my time and my education and my professional experience to public education. So basically, I was just deciding how I wanted to spend that time, whether it was doing different forms of advocacy or serving on various committees or sitting on the school board. And a good opening came up at the right time. So the school board makes sense, but it won't require too much more time than I already spend on public education advocacy.
Thank you. Ms. Burris?
Yes, thank you for that question. So I also work for an employer who is very flexible with our time, which is very appreciative. So that helps me do this work. I will just say, as Maka said, I don't think there's anything more important than K-12 education and my kids are in the thick of it. And so it's time worth spent. And then I'll just say, we do all have our own lives and I will, when I do something and I commit something, I go 100%. I will do my best to do this job well, but I think we all, as we've talked about our kids and are talked about the teachers, social emotional learning is important. And so I think balance is important and know when you need to unplug and get back to your family and when you need to dive back in.
Thank you. Mr. Claussen?
Yeah, thanks for that. Again, like Ruthina, you know, I have been doing this for four years and so I have carved out the time and really that's thanks to my family that supports me in doing that. You know, they appreciate the service and that's how they free me up in the evenings to attend board meetings. And then obviously, there's a lot of work behind the scenes too. You know, my job isn't as flexible, but like Ruthina, at times I do take vacation. I mean, I'm a teacher and it's very hard for a teacher to be out of the classroom, even to get a sub that, which I don't have subs at where I work. However, you know, I carve out the time. That's the definition of service to me. And the truth is, probably if I wasn't doing school board, I'd be, you know, advocating, serving in some other way. And so this is what I've decided to do and it is, it's very, it is significant. It's a lot of time. There's no doubt about it. I do like what Krista said about carving time out. That's one thing this board has done. We've sort of said Sundays are off limits for meetings, right? We want that to be preserved for family time and I think the board working together, making decisions like that helps keep us healthy as a governing body.
Thank you. And Ms. Finch?
Thank you. That's actually a very good question and I thought about it a lot. My, my sons are older now. I have a senior and a sophomore and they are, it's just, they need to do on their own. I have a very supportive husband who really picks up the slack for me. He's good at multitasking and at prioritizing and, you know, I did this when I worked with the Equity Advisory Committee and I did put a great deal of that. I'm passionate about these issues and it inspires me and engaged and once I commit to something, I commit to it. So I don't think that finding the time is going to be a problem for me.
Thank you so much. The next question, we're going to start with Ms. Pilcher Hayek and another question from the community. The Iowa City Community School District is receiving more than $40 million in federal relief to address the challenges experienced due to COVID-19. As a board member, what do you want to see from administration to measure the impact of how these funds are being spent? Particularly for our ELL and students of color who already were achieving at lower levels than their white peers?
Thank you for that. Yeah, yeah, thank you for that question, Joan. And it's a hard question. It's in two parts. I know that we're using some of those Esser dollars to add academic support teachers at every school. So hopefully those are helping our students that have more obstacles. I don't know what kind of checks are being done on that. The last part of your question is how should they measure the impact of how the funds are being spent? Well, we need to always be measuring the impact of, of how we are supporting students that have obstacles in their path, whether those are ELL students and/or students of color. I also do think that, and I wonder if this is what you're thinking, Joan, is that, you know, it's going to be easier to look at how these dollars are spent in hindsight. Because we didn't really know how long this pandemic would last and how much it would affect everyone. So I'm sure there will be things that we reconsider and perhaps would have done differently. I know we're all so concerned about when the Esser dollars run out. What do we do to continue staffing those positions? So it's a good question. It's a hard question and, you know, it's one that the board will have to work closely with the administration on.
Thank you. Ms. Burris, same question?
Yes, great question. So in a recent board meeting, I know there was a presentation and they delineated how the Esser dollars were spent and Matt, they sure that we were aware that a lot of the money was spent towards staff, towards teacher. And we, and I know I've heard from a lot of community members how important our teachers are and how we need more teachers at class size. And so I think he fully realizes they're our greatest resource. And in a big bucket of those expenditures was COVID learning loss. And so I've done a lot of research looking at this disruption to K-12 education and how students have been impacted. They aren't where their peers were the year before and we know that there's disproportionality. We know that students of color, low-income students, the impact was greater and we still continue to see that. And so I would want to measure that we do get our students tests at the end of the year and we track it and we should track it overall and we should track it by student groups. And we need to make sure that the money we're spending are actually improving those student outcomes.
Thank you. Mr. Claussen?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, as to the last part of the question, as far as what we're doing to support students of color and ELL students, you know, as the person who posed the question said, you know, that's been going on for a very long time since we've been measuring these things. And so what we are already doing, like the diversity, equity and inclusion plan, we need to maintain that, right? We need to push forward on those initiatives. I don't know, you know, if we see the impact, if we're going to be able to decide what exactly caused the impact. But I have to believe that solving disproportionality is in discipline and in math and reading scores is going to help. And the number one tool we have to do that are our staff. And so that is where most of that money has gone for us to maintain our RAM model, which puts more of those resources in our lower-income schools, as well as adding those academic support teachers. And then along the way, we can't forget about things like nurses, counselors, potentially therapists. And then along the way, we can't forget about things like nurses, counselors, potentially therapists, the, the kind of money to support our students' mental health. Because I can tell you, working on an inpatient unit, we were in crisis before and we're beyond that now.
Thank you, Ms. Finch.
Thanks, Jeanie. Yeah, I think I agree with whatever else has said already. I think we, you know, we all know that this pandemic has affected our most vulnerable the most. And we really need to be making sure that they are having their social emotional needs met. So we need to be addressing social emotional learning, mental health. We need to be making sure that, taking care of the people who take care of the most vulnerable. And so that includes our SFAs, that we have homeless transportation, prioritizing connectivity, making sure that our staffing RAM appropriately. Of course, we need to continue examining the data to ensure that progress is happening. Because our current achievement gap is applicable and I'm, I'm really concerned that it's only going to.
Thank you, and Ms. Malone, same question.
Yes, thank you, Joan, for that question. I, I would have to say, instead of repeating what a lot that Maka and JP have already said, because I wholeheartedly agree. I think one of the things that I would like to see is that we actually trust our teachers who are on the front line doing the work to help our ELL students and our students of color to make those strides to tackle the disproportionality. And we can't use standardized tests as a measurement because we know historically those tests aren't written for English, non-English speakers. And children of color, sometimes they're, they're just not written for them. So we need to look at creative ways to not only measure the success of our students, but also to make sure that they're being successful in different ways outside of the standardized tests that we see oftentimes districts rely on.
Thank you. Our next question, and I'm going to have Ms. Pilcher Hayek start with that one as well. This comes from the community. What is something you will bring to the board that will differentiate you from current board members? Guess that'll be hard for the current board members, but do the best you can. All right, so Ms. Pilcher Hayek.
Sure, thank you. So part of it would be my experience as an attorney. I've done, I've done some work as an attorney, as a mediator between teachers and administrations and families and administrations and families and teachers. I've been involved in IEPs and 504 plan meetings. So professionally, I am very familiar with the legal aspects of education and there are many. The other thing I would say is, you know, being involved in every student, any school, co-forming it with Paul Wrestler and co-forming the bond campaign. Not very many people could say they did that. That took, that took a Herculean effort by a small group of people to bring together parents and guardians from all across the district to work toward the same cause. And, and that network we created still exists today and will need it for the FMP 2.0.
Thank you, Ms. Burris.
Yes, great question. So I think what I bring to the board that is unique is my training and experience as an educational researcher. I've spent my whole career looking at educational data and how it relates to long-term success in terms of going on to college, getting a job. And not only doing that predictive research, wherever linking what happens in their more formative years to long-term outcomes, but also doing efficacy research. So what works in the classroom? What factors actually impact whether or not our students are successful? And so when we think about allocating resources, I hope to bring that lens to make sure we're thinking about spending our dollars to support student success.
Thank you, Mr. Claussen.
Yeah, I guess I can, I'll speak to, you know, just what I bring that might be different than other board members or candidates. You know, I, I am a current teacher and I was a teacher in the school district. And so that, you know, I brought a lot with me there. And then currently in my role, you know, I work with students from all over the state, not just from our school district. But I do, you know, have the opportunity to, obviously as a board member, look at things from the 30,000 foot view and the big picture. And then sometimes I actually get down, you know, to the, to the individual student, when I might be helping a student who's going through a crisis and might find themselves on our unit, help them kind of understand how, how they can best navigate their school experience. And that gives me a real insight into the supports we, we do have. And then also maybe the, the supports we need to really support our students who are experiencing mental health crises. So I get to know that in, in a very intimate way, in a very personal way. And, and obviously I wear two hats and those are pretty separate hats. But that certainly informs decisions I make when I go to the board, understanding how our school district works with, with mental health.
Thank you, Ms. Finch.
Yeah, so if I was elected, I would be the only healthcare person that might come in handy in the current situation. But really more than that is really my experience working with cancer and end of life care and the lens that I have on life. What, what I saw in the 18-year was that my patients who were affected by early life were, were most likely to be affected in terms of their physical, mental health, their socioeconomic status, their life trajectory, their interpersonal relationships and their happiness. And it was very instructive to me on how early life traumas affect us for our whole lives. What also differentiates me is that I have with the district create policy in terms of the discipline changes being made. And I have effectively built relationships to do that.
Thank you so much, Ms. Malone.
Yeah, thank you, Carrie, for that question. I think something that differentiates me from even current board members or candidates is my professional background. So I actively supervise people on a daily day basis. I work to hold them accountable. And seeing that one of the most important roles in the district is our, also our only employee, that being the superintendent, I think you have to have a very strong understanding of not only managing people, but supporting them in their decision-making process and helping them look at all moving parts at the same time. Another thing that I think differentiates me just a little bit, because there is another board member. My student is currently not in the district. So although she's not in the district, she's not too far removed. So I'm operating from that perspective of I want to see things that impact our entire district and not necessarily what's going to benefit my, my child. Not saying that's other people's views, but I think I have that unique perspective that I don't have a current tie with a student in a district. Thank you.
Thank you. And the next question has to do with diversity. The current Comprehensive Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan extends to 2022. What, what aspects of the plan are working well? And where does the plan need to be strengthened or expanded? And how is curriculum affected by the goals of this plan? And Ms. Burris, you're first on this one.
Great. And this is in chat, that's like a five-part question. I think the Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan, the vision is wonderful. And so I think the strategy is great. So that's what's working well. And now I think what we need to work on is the execution, right? So tracking whether or not we're closing those opportunity and access gaps. And, and I think we're making great strides. I think FMP 1.0, where we upgraded the schools has pushed us forward so that they have an equal opportunity in their education, closing those achievement gaps. So making sure that all students are college and career ready. We need to work on that. We need to track that. We see huge differences by student groups in who is leaving our district, ready for future endeavors. And we need to make sure that that doesn't continue. So putting our efforts towards there. And then I think a lot in the cultural and inclusive training of our staff. And our curriculum is really important and things we want to move forward. I know we're going through the history review. And so I think, I think there's a lot of opportunity to keep realizing the vision that's been outlined, which I think is wonderful.
Thank you, Mr. Claussen.
Yeah, thanks for this question. This is certainly one of my passions. So, so I'll say, you know, overall, I think what's working well with the DEI is primarily is it is giving our administration a lens through which they look at everything that we do. And that lens is equity. And I think that has played out in a number of ways, in a number of very concrete ways. One of which is the revision of the, our discipline policies and procedures that was completely revised and now includes a lot more practices such as restorative justice, which is a disciplined practice that really tries to help people transform through an issue rather than just punish. As far as curriculum goes, you know, that's a great example. We did review our social studies curriculum. We did that in a year. And normally that's a much longer process because we had identified some problematic curriculum. And so we took the year to redesign that, to, to move towards an inquiry model of education, of social studies, you know, based on, you know, helping students think through issues rather than, you know, just delivering some canned content. And then of course, our Grow Your Own program, we've, we've started that. We're taking baby steps with trying to move folks, particularly folks from marginalized populations up into our system. And that's where I would really like to see, see us place more focus as we move forward over the rest of that plan and then after that.
Thank you, Ms. Finch.
Thanks. Jeanie, can you repeat the question for me?
Sure. The current Comprehensive Diversity Equity and Inclusion Plan extends to 2022. What aspects of the plan are working well? And where does the plan need to be strengthened or expanded? And how is curriculum affected by the goals of the plan?
So I, the revising of the DPP this past year and the lifting of restorative practices was, was the key in moving the needle and shifting the focus of the plan to a more growth-minded approach. This was something that the Equity Committee has been advocating for, for several years. So I was very pleased to see that done. You know, in terms of the achieved, you know, the goal for the achieved, we haven't really moved the needle on that. But I view as the, the whole Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan is being very dependent. And so I don't think that that's going to improve until we do make inroads on the discipline that we, the hiring of BIPOC staff. I, I am pleased to see that we hired Equity ambassadors and ombudsperson and, and that we have included accountability into the new DEI plan. I guess my time is up.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Malone.
Yes, thank you for that question. You know, I wholeheartedly agree with everything that's been said about Krista, Jane and JP. So I'll try not to repeat any of that. But, you know, in my view, the first way to fix a problem is to acknowledge that there is a problem. So I think one of the highlights with our Equity Diversity Equity Inclusion Plan is the accountability and the acknowledgement that we have seen. A great highlight of that is back when we were, JP and I was running in 2017, we knew that our special education program was, I mean, there's no better way to say this, but was in shambles. So the district has acknowledged their failings by trying to actively correct those issues. And board members have stepped up to acknowledge that even though we may not have been part of that problem, we will be part of that solution and hearing from the families, because the families are the ones that's getting the service. So we need to have them as active partners at the table. And where I would like to see us, or how it impacts the curriculum, is that we need to ensure that our teachers know that they're supported, especially with the current law legislative changes that the state has made, that they're supported. And we want them to teach the absolute truth in our classes. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Pilcher Hayek, same question.
Okay, so a lot has been said that I agree with. So I'm going to focus on the, can you hear me? Someone's talking, sorry. The first goal, I think it might be Jane, you might be in, there we go. Sorry. The first goal of the DEI is about reducing opportunity gaps. This is something I think about all the time, how are we going to do this? We have all different learners. That's, that's what public school should be and it's what our public school system is. And our learners are changing every year. Our demographics change every year, as they should. So we're going to have to continue to look into programs that help us meet our learners where they are and how they come to us. And I, you know, the AVID program, the AVID program is a really good program and it's one that I wish were free. I want to get it in every school. I want every teacher trained. And I want every student to have access to the techniques AVID teaches. Just to give you a little insight on it in five seconds. It teaches kids how to be organized, how to take notes, how to communicate. These are skills that a lot of our kids lost. I mean, in online learning, this has been difficult for everyone. These are also skills that some kids just don't have yet, regardless of their age. And they're basic skills that will help them succeed in education. So again, bridging the achievement gap is a huge one and there are ways that we can do it.
Thank you. So there are some questions and I, in advance, had asked candidates if they would extend a little past eight o'clock to allow room for Superintendent Degner. And I appreciate your willingness to do that. But we will close now with the closing remarks. There are some questions in the chat that never, where you didn't get to. We will be sure to get those to you so that if you want to respond to those individuals, you would be able to do that. But for now, we're going to go ahead with closing remarks. And for these, you do get two minutes. Each candidate will have two minutes to make their closing statement and we'll go in reverse order from the opening statements. So we'll be starting with Ms. Hayek. Yes, boy, you're really watching. It's better, good thing I'm taking notes.
No, wait, I'm last. I'm last. I was first before. I was cheering.
Good to be last, that's right.
I think I'm first.
That's funny. All right, so Ms. Burris, right?
No, if we're going in reverse order, I think I'm first.
You're first, yeah, sorry.
Okay.
See, I need to learn to take notes.
That's okay. I will not take two minutes. But again, League of Women Voters and the community, especially the audience members providing us questions tonight. Thank you for this opportunity to address some of your questions and some of your issues. If anyone watching or listening have follow-up questions, please feel free to contact me at ruthina, that's R-U-T-H-I-N-A for board, F-O-R-B-O-A-R-D at gmail.com. I would be happy to also further discuss topics at this Saturday's Iowa City Farmer's Market. I will be there and I do welcome the opportunity to continue to serve our community. I truly mean it, that I see this as a huge honor to have your trust, to be an elected member of our school board. So I hope that I will be one of your three choices on or before November 2nd to continue to serve our community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Finch.
Thanks, Jeanie, and thanks to the League of Women Voters for having this forum tonight. Thank you to the community and the voters out there for, for attending this forum. I also thank the candidates who are all running. You know, I, I don't think you know what this is like until you throw yourself into it. And I'll say it's, it's been interesting. It's, it's also very difficult. And I, I think back on the, you know, Teddy Roosevelt quote that Brene Brown likes to use about the, the credit going to the person in the, in the arena. And so thank you all for doing greatly. And I just want to remind and encourage all of us to, to never bet on that is for the student. I hope my involvement in this race has shifted the conversation. I hope my involvement in this race has shifted the conversation to the importance of relationships. And it's because this is all about people, people and the connections and that, that our students make with, with our teachers. It's exciting to see how my camp, my camp, how many people across the district. And if I'm elected, I will commit myself to work hard to better students.
Thank you. Mr. Claussen.
Yeah, thank you. And I'll extend thanks to, to certainly the League of Women Voters and everybody who tuned in and everybody who's provided questions. And then folks who might be watching this either live stream or, or later on online. I will also, like Ruthina, say, you can contact me at JPforboard@gmail.com. And I can answer questions. It's very hard. This is one thing I've learned about being on the board, that things are very complicated and a lot goes on all of the time. It's really hard to encapsulate all that in, you know, short one or two-minute answers, which I understand we need to do, you know, for the sake of everyone's time. So like Ruthina, I'll be at the farmer's market Saturday morning, more than happy to take time to talk more in-depth, especially on issues that might be more personal to folks or something they don't want to put on a public forum. I do hope, you know, because I have been on the board for four years, that folks take a look at what we've done. And if you support that, I would hope that you support me for another four years to continue in that same vein. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Burris?
Great, thank you. Thanks, Jean. Thanks to League of Women Voters. Tonight's been awesome. It's been great to hear your questions. I really appreciate that. I learn stuff every day. This has been a huge learning curve for me. These last four months have been wonderful and exciting. I just know if I'm elected, it's going to be an even steeper learning curve. But I want you to know that I'm committed to understanding the complexity that JP mentioned and really serving this community. I'll say it one more time and then I'll let Maka say it again. K-12 education is so important. It sets our, our kids up for success. And I know at the heart of K-12 education are teachers. And just a little personal story about me. I've had so many teachers that have impacted my lives. I know I wouldn't be where I am today. My third-grade teacher, we had our, our first report card and I missed the mark by like one point in three different areas. And she, she saw somebody in me. She believed in me. She gave me extra credit. She's like, I know you can achieve more. So I did that. And then I never achieved a B again in my life, all the way through grad school. And I just want my Miss Leatherwood experience to happen for my kids, that they have a Miss Leatherwood experience and that every kid in our district has a Miss Leatherwood experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now Ms. Pilcher Hayek.
Thank you, and thanks to.
Close us out now, yes.
Thanks to you guys and thanks for those who attended. I'm running unopposed, so I'm just going to tell you what I think is important. I once asked an acquaintance why she did not send her kid to public schools. And she said, because I want to have, I want my children to have a value-based education. Having attended Catholic schools as a child, I was familiar with this explanation. But with three children in public schools, I now recognize the fallacy of it. Public schools teach children to learn side by side with people of all religions, colors, abilities, and identities. They teach the ethics of being a good human regardless of your background. Why is this important? Because if you do not learn with everyone, it is harder to work with everyone. Society needs adults who can work together. And if you do not interact with everyone, it is harder to empathize with everyone. Society needs adults who understand the different values and needs of its people. Because if you do not welcome everyone, it is harder to respect everyone. Society needs adults who respect people who do not look or think like they do. In a time of extremely divisive politics, public schools are how we protect the future. I can think of no better board to serve on than our district's school board. And you can reach me at maccaforschoolboard@gmail.com. You can find me at the farmer's market most times. You can stop me at a game or at a meet because there's, I can talk about public schools all day long. Thank you.
Thank you, and thanks to all of the candidates tonight. We would also like to remind you that the views expressed in this forum are those of the candidates and that the sponsorship of the forum is not an endorsement of any candidate. Remember to visit vote411.org for more election information. The election will be held on November 2nd. Please vote that day or before. Thank you to Superintendent Dagnor, the candidates, and to the Iowa City Cable TV staff. The recording of this forum will be available on the Facebook page of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County or on the website of the League of Women Voters of Johnson County at L W V J C dot org. It will also be available on Iowa City Cable Channel 4, Coral Vision, Coral Vision TV, and the North Liberty TV. Check their websites for program schedules. And again, thank you so much, everyone, for your participation tonight and candidates for going a little over. Thank you. Good night.